It's a. And I don't want us to be so far out how we want to.
I think.
All right, ready?
Is here.
I mean, I'm.
Probably with the.
This would not be the way.
Strong.
Yes.
And I saw.
Yeah.
But I also.
What is on the.
Oh, your worst.
I feel.
Yeah, we better wait for some.
I said, I wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the one. We had to. My act. That's what you're getting.
I didn't. Hey, welcome, everyone. It's time for our regular meeting to come to order. Our invocation will be given by Commissioner Perry and the Pledge of Allegiance will be given by our treasurer, Sean Thornley.
Our dearly Father, we come before thee this time grateful for the many blessings that thou has blessed us with. We're grateful to be here in Boxer County in Utah and in the United States of America. We're grateful for those who serve and protect us and make it so that we can have the freedoms that we have here in this country. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve thee at this time and be here in this commission meeting. We ask thy Spirit to guide and direct us, help us to do those things that thou would have us do. We pray that thou will bless those who are in need of special blessings at this time, that thou can be a comfort to them in their time of need, especially those who've lost loved ones. And we pray that thou will continue to guide and direct us in thy service and in the ability to do the things that thou would have us do. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please back the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. We are gonna go to item. Oh, thank you. Uh, we have the minutes for April ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from April ninth of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent that we approve the minutes from April ninth, twenty twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now we will go to item number seven, Boxer County Employee Recognition, and we'll turn that time to Commissioner Perry.
All right, thank you. Well, we continue to have, uh, great nominations coming in for Employee of the Month. And this one, we wanted to get it done before all the snow melted everywhere because it, it, those will snow to some level and some other things that go along with it. Um, this nomination came in, uh, let's see, I guess it actually came in back in, in March. But, uh, the, the nomination came in for Byron Southwick for the Employee of the Month. During this, this email said that during an awful snowstorm, now this is something Byron doesn't have to do. As his risk manager, he takes care of us, makes sure that we, we, we reduce our risk here in the county. And maybe that's what he was trying to do is his risk manager here. But, but during a snowstorm last month, um, Byron volunteered to walk one of the employees at the county attorney's office out to her car. She's pregnant right now. She didn't want to slip and fall. She was very concerned about that. And so after looking outside, Byron not only took it upon himself to clean the snow off of her car, but then he drove it up next to the door so that they, she didn't even have to attempt to walk in the snow, taking a chance of risking, uh, her safety and that. And so we're really impressed by the extra effort that, it's not Byron's job description. It, it did reduce her risk, I'm sure. But I can tell you that it was deeply appreciated by that employee and it's appreciated by the commissioners by going above and beyond for that. So for the month of April, we want to recognize Byron Southwick as our Employee of the Month and ask him to come forward.
You were just thinking you were here. We wanted a bright, shiny face. Right?
Good job.
Thank you. Every now and then we like to surprise you, so. All right. Hey, thanks for, thanks for what you're doing. Thank you.
I assume you do who this came from, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You do remember doing that, okay.
Oops, sorry. Okay, with that completed, uh, I'm gonna turn the, the meeting over to Commissioner Perry and ask to be excused and.
You will, you will call in at some.
I will join in on the phone.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Let's write this over. There's that back.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go back. We need to do the attorney's office. We'll go back here first and we'll do, uh, the administrative review reports. I think the only thing we have on future addenda items is, I think there's some things coming from forty-seven G. We'll be putting on a future agenda item and, oh, and then also we will be recognizing, there is, um, a citizen hero award that we'll be doing during the May, um, is it May seventh? Is that our next meeting? May, what's our next May meeting?
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth. So the May fourteenth meeting, we'll be recognizing a, a local hero. We'll get you all that information. There's, uh, some local folks that did some amazing things to help rescue some people. And so that will be done at that May meeting. We'll have on that agenda just for future, for reference. I don't think we have anything for emergency management. Is there nothing on ARP or L A T, T, uh, L A T C F, right? Okay. Okay. Um, now we need to go to, well, I was gonna go to former after attorney's office, but we'll go to former agenda item at this point.
Screwed up.
So you wanna talk about the former, bring up the former agenda item? Is the annexation Garland, the annexation, and she's got it right there.
Okay, so, uh, this was on, this was the annexation on, uh, was on Garland, is that not correct?
Yep, that's, this is the one we put on, uh, tabled at the last meeting. We've gathered, gathered more information. It has to do with the annexation and Garland that we talked about at the last commission.
The mayor actually sent us a letter that we reviewed and went over and so.
And we've talked with the county attorney's office about it. And it basically allows for two, the two properties to be annexed into Garland that are commercial properties. It's something that was done before, just done incorrectly and they need, uh, that approval.
There, it just wasn't complete, so we wanted them to complete that and, and get more information to us, which they've done. So I believe we're ready to move forward on that.
So if we could have a motion.
So I'll make a motion that, that we, uh, approved, uh, annexation section eleven dash thirteen two sixteen.
Hang on one second, I think we're, Commissioner Bingham's gonna call in, so he may be able to hear this. Is that Commissioner Bingham? Is he online?
I can hear ya.
Okay, so Commissioner. All right, Commissioner Bingham, just to bring you up to speed, we're under former agenda items and Commissioner Vincent is making a motion on the annexation for Garland. Go ahead.
So this is, this has to do with annexation section eleven dash thirteen dash two sixteen. Need, uh, that, that's my motion to approve that.
So we have a motion to approve the Garland annexation that was discussed in the previous meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second from Commissioner Bingham? Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Was there two of them?
Yeah.
So one do the second.
Sylvia and one for Kings.
Yep, so do, do, that, that's the first one. Now do the second one.
And they're the same number, right, correct?
No, they should be different numbers. Twenty-five dash twenty.
Oh, twenty-five dash twenty or twenty-one. And then this one is, uh, uh, annexation, uh, make a motion to approve annexation.
An agree, it's an agreement for.
Just an agreement, correct? So it's just a contract? Okay, thank you for that. And so this is just a contract, approval of a contract, and it's section eleven dash thirteen dash two sixteen, uh, twenty-five, twenty-one. Is that correct? I make a motion?
Okay, we have that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. So the two agreements, all right, we'll take care of those. Okay. Let's see, attorney's office. You're gonna tech, take care of the agreement twenty-five, twenty-three between First Responders First and Attorney's Office and the Fire Department, CJCC, MDT, anyway.
Thank you.
I can do that. This is Annie Hansen from the County Attorney's Office. This agreement is with a group called First Responders First. This is a, like a specialty EAP. They provide therapy, mental health, and other training services that's specifically for, um, first responders who deal with really traumatic and difficult things in their jobs. And so this agreement would be in place to assist the attorney's office, all the employees there, the Fire Department, the CJC, the MDT group, and the Sheriff's Department. It also includes the criminal, the Justice Court. We were able to add them to that agreement. And so, um, it's just billed as we use it. We did, we will have a justification in place because they're, they're pretty much a sole source. There's a lot of EAPs, but they don't always have that specialty training to help first responders. And then in conjunction with this, we're also working on a grant that would actually cover a lot of the cost, um, of this agreement to help us provide these services to the employees.
I read through that, Annie, and I, I think this is great, what our law enforcement and first responders and those folks deal with and these critical incidents. They absolutely need to, need to visit with people. And so I think this is important for our county. I think it's a good thing, especially with the funding and, and the things that we're being able to work with, the money's part of it. So I like it.
Okay, you wanna make a motion to accept it?
I will make a motion. So make a motion to approve agreement number twenty-five, twenty-three as presented.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. It's a motion from Commissioner Vincent, a second from Commissioner Bingham to accept agreement twenty-five, twenty-three between First Responders First and the various county offices as described. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, we'll go to the auditor's office.
Thanks, Annie.
Shirley, and if you wanna come up? You wanna start with A? Just work our way through them. All right, we'll start with, uh, personal property tax rule correction.
Okay, so on this, we had, uh, some personal property that says solar farm that was added into the tax rules and it was put in the wrong tax area. And so this is just to correct that, which does make a slight change in how much tax we'll be collecting for the various entities as there's different taxing entities within the different tax districts. So there are two of those I need signed by the commission.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
No, I read. Sure, we got the right ones here. So we're talking still solar, right?
Yes, still solar LLC.
Yep.
And they had new, it was brand new and was just the, when we looked into it, the property, the physical property it's on was split between two tax areas. So we took it out of tax area one twenty-five and split it equitably between one twenty-six and one twenty-four.
Okay, I accept the motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the personal property tax ro, role correction.
Do we need to do them separately? Just clarifying. Do we need, because we have, I've got, we've got one account and another, do we?
Probably should do each personal property account, just in case.
Okay, so I'd make a motion, we approve tax area one twenty-five to one twenty-four as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. This is tax change from area one twenty-five to one twenty-six or account number P zero 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 three six seven two. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve account number P zero 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 three six seven two.
We did that one.
As, as presented.
Isn't that the last one you just passed?
It's this one you wanna do.
Okay.
Gotta do that one.
Hold on, Boyd, we're, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves here.
Okay.
Okay. I would approve account number P zero 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 four one four nine as presented, tax change.
Do we have a second? Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Vincent, a second from Commissioner Bingham to approve account P zero 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 four one four nine, tax areas one twenty-five to one twenty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next couple of items are related to, um, items I need to do for our, our external audit each year. And so the first one is a fee schedule that we have in place that we want you to approve along with current existing fees as this. We're trying to make sure it's all inclusive, but there will be a later final version. But these are our fees as of today, along with any other current existing fees. If you've had a chance to review them or if you have any questions on those.
Any questions?
Nope.
If not, we entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the county fee review, uh, by Shirley Larson.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, so I have a, uh, motion from Commissioner Vincent, a second from Commissioner Bingham to accept the county fee review, uh, fees and approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, fraud risk.
The next is a questionnaire the state auditor's office has us fill out regarding our fraud risk. We've got a chance to review it. We're at three seventy-five out of three ninety-five, so our risk is in the very low category. And probably the only thing we're missing is, um, establishing a formal audit committee, which they recommend that you do underneath the legislative body. The difficulty we have with rural counties is we don't have a full-time internal auditor. Myself and staff try to do that, but we're also doing accounting work day to day. So we haven't really established a formal audit committee, but that is the one thing we could improve our score with. Do you have any questions on that questionnaire?
How significant, I mean, how big of a committee would we have to create to do an audit committee?
They don't really outline that. They do suggest using some financial officers from other government entities that would have the background and knowledge, like trade-off, like me serving on one and they serve on mine or that sort of thing.
So with some of the cities or?
Yeah, but I've never been approached to do anything like that, but.
Okay, maybe, maybe we need to go back to the cog and find out how many cities are doing that.
I think that'd be appropriate.
And then we can possibly put something in place.
Yeah.
Does that work? We'll work with you on that, so.
Sure.
Okay.
I read it, I, I think that's great.
Do we need to make a motion to accept the fraud report then?
Probably, and I need a signature on the bottom. I don't know if that's one I provided to you.
Yes, we've got a copy of that one here.
I've got the original, if you wanna sign that one.
That's great, we can take care of it.
I'll make a motion, we approve the fraud risk assessment.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Vincent, a second from Commissioner Bingham to accept the fraud risk assessment as presented by our auditor, Shirley Larson. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll take care of that. All right, last one is the late property tax abatement.
Yes, so the gentleman that brought in the tax abatement just brought it in to me about a week or so ago. But if you look at, well, April fourth is what we dated it, but we've been in contact with him since the fall. He qualifies for both circuit breaker and the county fifty percent. He knew the deadlines, but he has a health condition with OCD that if he has to go out in public or whatever, he has a set of rituals he normally has to do that really slows him down and makes it very difficult for him. Tried to tell him that past December thirty-first, we've already submitted to the state for the circuit breaker and got our reimbursement. But he would like the full reimbursement. If we only do half, then he'll be responsible for eight hundred and nine dollars and ninety-three cents. If you allow the circuit breaker portion, it is, it would make his taxes down to one fifty-two forty-one.
Okay. So if we, since we've already submitted to the state, we're gonna have to, it would be on us.
Right, so it would come out of our county coffers as far as if you reduce his taxes down. He did say he only has the two hundred to put towards that. And so if he needs to further come talk with you, he could get on the agenda again and hope that he could show up.
From what I understand, he's got some issues that he's gotta deal with, that besides the, I mean, medical problems and he's got, he's very tight financially, that's. But he does understand that it has to be filed in a timely manner if we continue to go forward. I mean.
We talked with him several times over the phone. It's just very difficult for him, but I'm gonna start working with him in, soon as I get the new form for this year to try and get him in before the December thirty-first deadline, so.
Yeah, okay. And let's see, make sure we got the right name here.
It's Bruce, sorry, Bruce Larkin.
So commissioners, what do you wanna do with the late property tax abatement? Do we have a motion to do something on one of that? Do they accept the full thing or the partial?
So, so who is this? Do we have a name or not?
This is, this is the one that, yeah, Bruce Larkin, and, yeah, they, he, um, our auditor sent us out the information. He's got some issues that make it hard for him to come in public. He filed a little late with getting the property tax abatement in, um, but is fully aware of it now, so.
Yeah, I know Bruce.
Do you wanna make a motion then?
Um, yeah, I would make a motion that we, that the county pays, uh, the share that he would normally have to pay and.
The motion is to accept the abatement as turned in?
Okay, all right.
Is that okay?
Make a motion, we, if we accept the abatement as it's been turned in.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to accept the abatement record as presented, um, for the county at this point, for this individual. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Shirley.
Okay. That takes us to our clerk's office updating the form for agriculture protection area. Do you wanna talk about it from the clerk's office or you just want us to? We, we've been provided a copy of the information on updating the agriculture protection area. We reviewed it. Is there anything that you need, uh, need to say about it? So we just made some updates to the, the current agri, agriculture protection area application form, but so that people want to, to apply for the agriculture protection area application. It'll be an updated form. They'll make it easier for us to follow. It'll make it easier for the county to take care of this process. So with that, I'd accept a, a, a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the updated form for the agricultural protection area as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Vincent, a second Commissioner Bingham to accept the updated form for an agricultural protection area application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Okay, um, let's see, we have a, three items here for the commissioners, requesting a fee waiver for the fairgrounds for a pickleball fundraiser, Elise Peterson.
That has actually been canceled.
That's canceled, okay. Well, we'll take that one off the list.
Don't worry about that.
All right, let's go to the next one, requesting permission to use the courthouse parking lot for Spade and Hope Garden Club, Jody Peterson, who also makes sure that our grounds look beautiful every year.
She does a great job.
It is pretty amazing.
All right, um, Jody Peterson, I'm here on behalf of Spade and Hope Garden Club. We are a club that was established in nineteen sixty-four. We have a good group of ladies and a few men. I have not, no. They meet once monthly and we go over different classes and things. This is our one and only fundraiser, um, our plant sale that will happen that Saturday morning if we are allowed to use the parking lot. Just from eight AM to eleven, we will not need the restrooms or anything inside the building, just the parking lot. The funds that we use, that we gain from that, um, plant sale will go towards the Pregnancy Care Center this year. That is our project and our service. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Is there, it, there's no conflict at the county building from our buildings, right? We've got parking lots available, okay. I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that, that we re, that we approve the request permission to use the courthouse parking lot for the Spade and Hope Garden Club plant sale on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Okay, have a motion? Do we have a second? Have a second, so I have a motion from Commissioner Vincent, a second from Commissioner Bingham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, all right.
Thanks, Jody.
Okay, so anybody who wants to come and buy flowers, that's a good time to come and buy flowers. All right, let's go to agreement twenty-five, twenty-four to preserve the Willard Canyon Trail Agreement between the Wells family, Willard City, and Boxer County. Commissioner Hadfield, I mean, can be a commissioner, county attorney Hadfield. I'm, I'm looking at this and seeing Hadfield and, well, I'm like, I don't see Jeff here anymore, so anyway.
This is an agreement that's been in the works for a while. What it does is an agreement between the county, uh, the city of Willard and the Wells family to keep the trail going up through Willard Canyon. Essentially what the agreement provides is, because the trail is in a situation right now where it's not the safest trail based upon the mining that's going on up there. So what the agreement provides is, between all three, is that that trail will be moved. That will require the current trail to be vacated and a new trail to be dedicated. It also anticipates that we may need to do that again in the future. So we have an area surveyed where that trail will remain in an area. We may have to do it three or four times. We don't know how many times we'll have to do it. But it's an agreement between all three to make sure that the trail stays in place. I think it's a good agreement. There's been a lot of cooperation working, putting it together.
Yep, I, you and I have both been meeting with Willard City, with the Wells family, um, to make sure this gets open. Like I said, it works with the mining community that's there. It makes it so that people can re-access that Willard Canyon. We as a county, that, the reason behind this, so people know, is, um, the Wells, this Wells that is actually in Boxer County, not in Willard City. And even though it abuts Willard City as part of this, this property area, so this would basically, um, what we had to do with Willard City is Willard will be in charge of the enforcement for making sure people follow the rules and stay on the trail so that they don't get off and end up getting injured or having something bad happen to them there. But it is a really well-worked-out agreement between all the parties involved and will give access back to that Willard Canyon area, which I know a lot of people are really looking forward to. So with that, I would, uh, be open to a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve number twenty-five dash twenty-four to preserve the Willard Canyon Trail, uh, as presented by our county attorney.
Have a motion, we have a second, we have a second. So we have a motion from Commissioner Vincent, a second from Commissioner Bingham for agreement twenty-five, twenty-four to preserve the Willard Canyon Trail. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Okay. All right, let's go to community development, uh, corridor preservation fund request. Scott, you wanna come up?
Good afternoon, morning, I guess it is afternoon, bell's ringing. I have three items. First one, CPF twenty-five dash zero one, this is a corridor preservation funding request from, uh, Honeyville City. They are requesting, um, I think it came out to, you probably have a more updated document than I have there.
Eighty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-five, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, yep.
So that covers fifty percent of the cost of the project. The total project cost, I think, was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fifty. What they're proposing to do is widen, um, the frontage road there from sixty-nine hundred north to about seventy-two hundred north.
Yeah. How much wider can they make that? I know we've been out there and looked at that road, it's, I mean, are they, are they gonna go out to the mailboxes approximately? Is that where we think they're gonna go with it?
Yeah, I, I think the proposal is three feet on each side.
Okay.
So they gain an extra, uh, six feet is what they would get out of it. So originally their project, it scored below the minimum threshold and that's where, uh, the, the fifty percent contribution came from. You can gain points by, uh, match, matching funds. So by matching at fifty percent, they met, met the minimum score. This went before the cog on, uh, April seventh and was approved. And so now it comes to you for final approval. At that point, they can begin their project and they would come back when the project's finalized for that funding reimbursement.
And this is the frontage road on the east side of the freeway, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure we got the right one.
So Scott, I, I have a question. So Scott, that is from sixty-nine hundred north to seventy-two is the road that right parallels the freeway, right?
Correct.
And so when it starts going north, that's where, seventy-two hundred north, that's where it ends?
That, that, this specific project, that is where it ends.
Okay.
So we entertain a motion to accept the corridor preservation fund request, twenty-five oh one from Honeyville.
I'll make a motion that we approve the corridor preservation fund request, CPF dash twenty-five dash zero one by Honeyville, as presented by Scott Lyons.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Vincent, a second from Commissioner Bingham to accept the corridor preservation fund request, CPF twenty-five oh one from Honeyville. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, let's go to the next one, twenty-five oh two.
All right, twenty-five oh two, this one is, uh, West Forest Street. It's a right-of-way expansion, so it's an acquisition of right-of-way. And this one, it met the minimum score required. The total estimated. The total estimated project cost is five hundred and ten thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars. The city's proposing to match that at ten percent, uh, so that would come out to fifty-one thousand eighty-nine dollars and thirty cents. So the requested amount from the fund would be four hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and three dollars and seventy cents. Um, if I remember correctly, on this one, it was expanding that West Forest right-of-way from sixty, either sixty feet or sixty-six feet out to eighty feet.
What part of Forest Street is this covering? I'm trying to look on the map and try to figure that out.
Yeah, that, that map kind of shows, it basically goes from, from the, uh,
Is it Bird Refuge?
Just, just past the Refuge Building, just west of the Refuge.
So Refuge West?
Yep, and then it goes west from there.
Okay, that's what I was just, hard to tell on that map exactly where it was at, but so it's basically west of the Refuge going west, alright. I'd entertain a motion for the corridor preservation fund request from Brigham City of CPF twenty-five oh two.
I'll make a motion that we approve corridor preservation fund request, CPF twenty-five dash oh two by Brigham City, presented by Scott Lyons.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Vincent, a second from Commissioner Bingham, to accept the corridor preservation fund request, CPF twenty-five oh two from Brigham City. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Last one, corridor preservation fund request, CPF twenty-five oh three from Brigham City.
So this one is Georgia Drive to eleven hundred west, so this is, uh, if you're familiar where the, uh, Flying J is down there um, on eleven hundred south. Uh, a little bit west of that, you've got like RV parks and storage units. So there's a, a missing connection from that road, Georgia Drive, to the new eleven hundred west intersection. Um, currently it's just pasture. Uh, as that pasture sits currently, the property owner, uh, could get a bit, building permit or development in, in some way. And so the city wants to ensure that that connection exists by acquiring that right-of-way through there. Um, and that one is, total estimated project cost is two hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars. Uh, the city is to match ten percent per their application, which comes out to twenty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-three fifty. So the request is two sixty-nine, nine hundred forty-two. Um, this one also went to the cog on April seventh and came, uh, with approval from them.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the corridor preservation fund request, CPF twenty-five dash zero three by Brigham City, as presented by Scott Lyons.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Vincent, a second from Commissioner Bingham, to accept the corridor preservation fund request, CPF twenty-five oh three from Brigham City. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Alright, let's go to the Treasurer's Office. Is Dustin Norman here? Want to come up? So deferral of property tax. And we will probably have, uh, our Treasurer come up as well here in a minute, depending on the circumstance, but with that Dustin, if you'll just introduce yourself, so give your name, where you, and where you're from, and then you can tell us what your request is.
Uh, my name's Dustin Norman, I'm here from Brigham City, Utah.
And if you pull that mic up just a little closer, that way it gets recorded, because our clerk has to type the minutes out, so.
Yes, my name is Dustin Norman, I'm from Brigham City, Utah.
Okay, and what is your request?
Um, it's got down here on deferral property tax, but the request is just a granted a one-year extension for paying that sum. And, uh, if it's granted, also a request by the board to have it, have it taken off the newspaper so that all these people don't keep coming to my house in the middle of the night and calling me non-stop trying to buy my property up.
Okay, if we can have our Treasurer just come up and, and have him just explain a couple of things to us, so we have an understanding of, um, what the impact would be for us on this. So you're asking for an extension as well, right?
One-year extension.
A one-year extension, so we'll have our, our county treasurer, Sean Thornley, just talk to us real quick, if you can have the mic there.
What information would you like?
If you'd share with us what the, um, because I'm just looking at what his form is, I don't see the cost and what the, the process is for granting the extension, just so we have an understanding of what we need to do.
Yeah, on your approval, we can remove him from the tax cell for this year. Uh, the current amount of tax owed is eight thousand seventy-one dollars and one cent, uh, no payments in the last five years. Taxes are currently running about just under eighteen hundred dollars a year.
Eighteen hundred a year, okay. And what's the total amount right now owed?
It's eight thousand seventy-one dollars and one cent as of today.
Okay, alright, Mr. Norman, is there a reason we haven't paid taxes in five years?
Not knowing.
What? Not knowing that you're supposed to pay property taxes? I'm just, that's what we're, we're trying to figure out here.
So, I didn't, I've never been home. I didn't know about all this, it was all an escrow, I went to see a father die. Mr. Vincent even, it's been a while, um, I didn't know about it, and I always got this thing that says this is, uh, worrying about it, because this comes out saying this is not a bill, this is not a bill. It was always taken out of what they had, I had learned since, the escrow. But when my wife was, uh, diagnosed, um, she was a stage four breast cancer survivor. She, at that point, right around nineteen twenty, we paid off the home, I don't pay off the mortgage. And so I didn't know about this, otherwise I definitely would have self-figured here.
To getting the notice, but you weren't getting the bill? Because there's a, there's a notice and there's a bill that comes to your home, and would have been five years worth, the bills would have, should have been, they're, they're separate. They come slightly about three months, about two or three months apart, basically, you get one in the summer and then.
The tax notice comes at the end of October, and then there would be an additional delinquent notice that would go out at the beginning of January.
Okay.
And that's when he came to my home, that's what we talked about, and also I talked with the, um, yeah, the other, here at the window, um, trying to find out, make sure things are up to date. I get all of my mail, I check all of my mail, I have, you know, I have a lot of businesses in there. I've been there and not went anywhere, so I'm aware of it all now, and like I said, coming up with that much. Um, I got the one in the mail, this one in the mail, and then about two weeks later, got, sort of like, I didn't know the same thing. Pretty much given me three weeks, so they're going to sell my home for, oh, I'm going, no, no. So I'm doing whatever I can to put myself to the mercy of the commission to just get one year extension, it'll be paid in full, and paid every year, get paid.
And, and how do you expect it to go by? I mean, because right now you're talking eight thousand seventy-one dollars and seventeen cents, there might be some interest. But then another eighteen hundred dollars at the end of the, the next year. I mean, do you have a plan to make that payment? I mean, because what we've done in the past, we actually have had some people come in and set up a payment plan to get that taken care of, and that's what we're just trying to figure out, is how do we know that we're not gonna be back here a year from now and saying, well, I can't get to the eight thousand dollars?
Uh, multiple belongings of my own, um, different collection, stuff like that, even my cars, we don't have cars. But will be sold that just could, wouldn't be sold in a two-week timeframe. Um, I'm not lying on that, I'll be paying out my payments, my checks, everything else. Um, it, it will be taken care of, that's given my work.
Well, I think what Commissioner Perry's just saying is we just don't want to overwhelm you. In other words, you've got this eighty, eighty-seven hundred dollars and then eighteen hundred, and so we just want to make sure that, that we, you know, we don't like, we don't mind working with people, we just want to make sure that we don't overwhelm you to where you say, oh my heck, I can't pay that either, and then we end up in a bigger situation, so.
So, well, I guess what I'm asking is, is there a payment plan that you can guarantee us that we know it's gonna get paid down within the next year? If we say, hey, we'll take your name off the tax rolls, but you're gonna make so much a month payment so that we know there's progress being made so that we don't get surprised next year and come November, and it's now ten thousand?
That's kind of what we do as a county, is we assess a payment. That way that we know that that payment's being made and we're gonna be reimbursed, and we don't have to.
We're at the end of April, by maybe twenty, maybe twenty-five, maybe twenty-one, like, maybe even faster, I mean. We're all, we're all, we're all old timers, if, if, if it, please the commission, I can give you a three thousand dollar firearm right now, you can go and say, here, you know, take off. It doesn't work that way, no, what I'm saying, just like, I've got.
Well, if, just so you know, I mean, five hundred dollars a month is not gonna get you all the way there. That would only get you, for the rest of the year, would only get you halfway, or not even quite halfway there. So that's why I'm, we're trying to make sure we know where we need to be payment-wise. Realistically, if you were gonna get it paid off by the end of the year, it would almost have to be a thousand dollars a month to be caught up. Is that doable?
And be able to pay the taxes, Dustin, the, and the year as well.
Your taxes next year with that eighteen hundred dollars? So have we done one, have we done those other forms, you're correct?
Working on them, yes, we've got other.
Okay, so we have other agreements that we've worked on and we're preparing, preparing to put out that are something like that. So if we figured out that eight thousand, is it eight thousand seventy-one, right?
Yes.
Eight thousand seventy-one, so if we came up with a, a payment plan starting in May that breaks that down, that'll have, so you have that eight thousand dollars paid off by the time the next, I guess it would be, we could go to Janu, to December for, or to December, but you're gonna have the eighteen hundred dollars on top of that for the next one after that. Do you understand that? That would be the, we'd take it off the property tax cell and set up a payment plan just like we did with the previous ones. With, probably gonna be slightly more than a thousand dollars a month, but roughly that, to get it paid off in that time period. Does that make sense, and does that sound fair? Okay, so.
Anybody has to work with our auditor's office and.
Well, it's actually our Treasurer's Office they need to work with, so. Is there any concerns with that?
Nope.
Sean, we, we do similar to that, what we've done in the previous ones? Okay, so I'd be open to a motion on that, to that effect.
I'll make a motion that we do a deferral in the property tax as far as a payment of a thousand dollars to be worked out with our Treasurer's Office.
Approximately. It probably needs to be approximately, because we need to base it on that total amount.
Right.
So that he can make the payments to pay it off by the end of.
That's why I made the motion that it'll be worked through with our, our Treasurer's Office, so.
And with our county attorney's office.
So, uh, our county attorney's office is working on a form that we'll have you sign, but anyway, I make the motion that we, that, uh, we do this deferral on the property tax as far as a payment with our auditor's office. And, or excuse me, Treasurer's Office for a thousand dollars, uh, maybe a little bit more, depending on where we come to with that, with the making sure it's paid by December, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, as, as far as the bill will be paid by December.
We'll pull it off the tax cell.
And then we will pull it off the tax cell.
Okay, that's our motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion from Commissioner Vincent, a second from Commissioner Bingham, that we take this off the tax cell with the, uh, agreement that we get this tax paid off during the year of twenty twenty-five with installments. And we'll prepare and provide a copy of him from the county attorney's office to the, so that it gets taken care of with the Treasurer's Office. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
We hope it wasn't as clear as mine.
Motion passes. Okay, so we'll be working with you? Yeah, they, that will be, yeah, that, when it gets pulled off the tax cell, it won't be in the paper.
On today's paper, but going forward, I can.
Yeah, right, from there forward. Yeah, good to know, and like I said, we just, we don't want to put anybody out of their home, but we do need to have people pay their property taxes appropriately there, so. Alright, we've got, um, Cindy Cheney, that's, is she here? And this is, uh, requesting a one-year property tax extension for partial zero-three, zero-seven, zero, dash, zero-zero-one-four. And if you'll take the mic and introduce who you are.
I'm Sage Boris, I'm a woman.
You're, now, your name again? Sage, W, Sage, what's the last name? Bert?
Boris.
Okay. Alright, and this is Cindy, okay. And tell us, okay, we've got here that you're looking for an extension from property tax. Are you, are they in the same situation, Sean? If you want to come back up just real quickly, so we kind of know what we're dealing with here.
Yeah, similar situation. Total amount owed is nine thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents.
One more time, nine thousand, how much?
Nine thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents.
Okay.
No payments in the last five years. Taxes are running just over two thousand dollars a year at this point.
Okay.
I've not received anything, um, she just got it, her name. My brother told me about three or four years ago that, um, people on disability would not have to pay tax. And so I'm just going by that as such. He did not tell me I had to fill out any forms or anything. He just told me people on disability don't have to pay tax. And I have physical and mental disabilities, so.
And there's no, no mailbox at the home, right?
No, we have a P O box at the post office, and we're having others get the mail out in Corinne.
Okay. Okay, so this is out in Corinne, and this is, and so we're, you're having troubles, troubles with your P O box out there, but it is a P O box, not a mailbox at the home?
Yes.
Okay.
What's your P O box number?
Two oh seven. They're having a problem with the mail, because we go there, I mean, they're supposed to be open, and when they're, they're supposed to be a mail person there, and no one's there, because we have a package, and someone's coming over there.
Okay, and the property's been transferred into your daughter's name?
No.
Or, no, or both? Both names, okay.
Yeah.
And that just happened recently? Or? Since you bought the property? Okay, so you paid taxes and then you found out that you felt like that because of disabilities, you weren't supposed to pay taxes, and then just hadn't been paying taxes? You've been in it, okay.
Yeah, she got, she got pregnant.
Okay.
And she had to put the door.
Okay. Um.
Can I ask if there's other folks that live at the house too?
No, not anymore.
So it's just the two of you?
Okay. So, um, we, we need to figure out a way to, to pay the taxes and figure out, um, I don't know, what, what would, is there some disability law in this that you're aware of?
None that I'm aware of.
I know there's a, there's a possibility of a, of the circuit breaker, right? Abatement?
So there's a financial threshold for a person with disability if they're under sixty-five, they can prove evidence of that. They just need to fill out that annual form every year.
So maybe that's.
My brother did.
Right, we understand that. So I wonder if this is what we need to do on this one, before we go to the payment plan, is maybe we could come back to a future meeting, maybe we postpone this decision for now, and then find out more about the forms with our auditor's office and find out what the change would be, um, and figure out kind of where we're, we need to be. I don't know, is there, you have a suggestion, Sean?
Sherlyn, do they qualify for an abatement if there's delinquent taxes?
I would have to check the rules on that. I know they can't get a deferral with delinquent taxes, but as far as the abatement, I'm not sure. And they are on the tax cell, which is on the fifteenth of May, so.
Boy. So we've got, and our next commission meeting's not till the, is it the fourteenth? So the day before? Um, so I don't know, Commissioners, do you have a decision, you, something you want to do with this? Do you want to hold it till the fourteenth? Do we want to, um, pull it off the tax cell for now until we can resolve the issue? And then we can put it back on next year if we had to? I, that's, we need, I don't know if the county attorney's office has any ideas of a way we can work with the folks?
No, I think they can be worked with. The, the tax cell makes it a little, a little expedient. Um, I don't have an issue, it'd be up to Sherlyn whether to pull it off. I don't think it's our policy to kick people out of their holes.
If we pulled it off for this year, while we work with them to try and figure out a way of, maybe a payment, doing something similar with a payment plan and finding out what if disabilities, availabilities there are. There may even be something through our bearer association of governments that might be able to assist them, I think. So I think that may be something we could maybe.
Well, I think we look, need to look at that and see if there's some type of, because Sherlyn, you, you said something about the disability. Is there something that, uh, a law or something that, that is in place that people can get their taxes? Because I think I've read that, that there, they can get a reduction.
Yeah, and that will only be up to fifty percent of the prop, of the tax.
Okay, but, but that wouldn't be, that would not be fifty percent of what has incurred at this point, correct?
No, I don't think we can go back that far.
Okay, so we can't go back, but I'm wondering if maybe we could figure something out, look at some disability, uh, to help them and see what the law is there, so I would, I would agree, I think we oughta, I think we oughta wait and see if we can do that.
Do we want to pull it, pull it from the tax cell, or do we want to leave it on till May fourteenth? What, what's your preference?
Well, the problem of it is, it's May fourteenth, you, you have one day.
Correct.
And, and so, I mean, that puts it, I, 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 I would be in favor of waiting a year and see if there's something we can do as far as helping them with the disability part of things, so.
And then possibly putting, if we got you on a payment plan, is that something that you could work out?
Yeah, because she gets a job, you know, about she, she's put up in my.
Okay, so I have, entertain a motion, commissioners.
I'd, I'd make a motion that, that, uh, that we take this off the tax sales, that we, um, that we, that we put it on for one year, go over this and see with, uh, our auditor's office and the, and our treasurer's office and see if we can help them.
Establish a payment plan possibly?
Yeah, a payment plan plus, see if we can find the disability, see if there's a, a law out there that will pertain to their circumstances and help them in that direction. That'd be my motion.
Okay, have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we take this off the tax sale, that we continue to work with these individuals, um, to get a payment plan and possibly find out if there's other exemptions for their property tax situation to work with our auditor's office, our county attorney's office. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion, any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so we'll continue to work with you. Don't, again, we have your contact information, um, so make sure you keep talking with our, our treasurer's office and go meet with our auditor's office so that we can, uh, work this thing out as far as getting that. And then Shirley, do you have the access to brag to give them the contact over here at our bearer? Oh, Sean's right here. So if you want to talk to him out in the hallway area, he can maybe give you some information that they can put you in touch with somebody from our bearer association of governments as well. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item number fourteen, our tourism office, tourism tax advisory board grant recommendations. Joan, and you're going to bring up Cameron Hansen, who's going to?
That would be Matt.
Or Matt, sorry. I, I, at least I'm not calling him Byron. He kind of looks like his dad, he kind of, it's starting to look like his dad a little bit, so, but, you know. He's getting, he's getting a little more white there, so anyway. All right, sorry, Matt. All right, so who's going to talk first? Just make sure we introduce ourselves as we talk.
So, um, this is Matt Hansen, he is the, uh, he's the chair of our Box Elder County Tourism Tax Advisory Board. And we are just here to, uh, ask for your approval of our, uh, of our yearly, uh, grant program.
You want to tell us about it, Matt?
I appreciate you, Commissioner Perry, for, uh, your help on the board. And you'd like to also raise guys, and Jan Rose here today from, from our tab board. Anyways, I think you both have received and seen the, our list of, that we have for, for recommendations. They're here to see approval for those who have grants. I'm wondering if you have any questions about any of them?
I don't have any questions, I, there's a couple of them on here I think are fantastic for our local community. I just, I really think that we're seeing some really impressive things going on in the communities, um, trying to, like I said, bring people into Box Elder County for tourism functions, and I think these are, a lot of these are very worthwhile projects that will bring people to our community. And best thing is they'll spend money here in our restaurants and our hotels, and then they'll go home. So that's not a bad thing for us as a county.
So, just so folks are aware, we receive twenty percent of the hotel tax that we collect and twenty percent of the restaurant tax that we collect. And, uh, that's what we use for this, for this grant program. So that was a total of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars and we spent that to the penny.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion from the commission.
I'd make a motion that we approve the tourism tax, uh, financial, uh, recommendation from Joan Hammer and Mr. Hanson.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, we have a motion to accept the twenty twenty-five T Tab standard grant recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now you have one more thing.
Just really quick, um, we added three new folks to our board. I mean, we're seeking approval to, to add them permanently. We have Candace Anderson with the Hampton in Brigham City, she's representing lodging. All of the folks on our, on our tourism tax advisory board, um, are folks that actually collect those funds. And, uh, so we've got Candace Anderson, uh, representing lodging, Kevin Hall with Peach City representing restaurants, and Candy Burden from Willard Bay State Park representing public lands.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to accept these three new members to the Box Elder County Tourism Tax Advisory Board.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, these, uh, three folks to participate on our tourism tax advisory board as presented by Joan Hammer.
Second.
Have a motion from Commissioner Vincent, second, Commissioner Bingham, to accept the three new members for the Box Elder County Tourism Tax Advisory Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thanks, and thanks for your support.
Yeah, we appreciate it, this is.
Thanks, Matt.
We're looking forward to some great events this year in Box Elder County for tourism, so this will be great. Okay, so now this takes us to our next part, which is our public comment section. And we know Commissioner Bingham's probably getting close to where he's going to have to check off to go into the meeting that he's at in Salt Lake. So we have three people who've signed up for public comment here, we'll call you up. We'll just let you know, again, we're just making the public comments, you've signed the roll, we've got those here. Uh, you have one three-minute opportunity to speak regardless of the number of items you wish to address, and you need to address those comments to the county commission only. Uh, it's a time to be heard and there'll be no back and forth dialogue with the commission during this. And that you can file copies of your remarks with the county clerk, um, for supporting information. So with that, we'll start off with Deanna Hardy. Is that mic not working?
No, it's not good.
All right.
Doesn't even move. Okay, Deanna Hardy Brigham. The World Economic Forum in conjunction with United Nations Agenda Twenty Thirty, Twenty Fifty want to end property rights and ownership of vehicles. The goal is to have a shared economy. Quote, "You will own nothing, you will not own anything and be happy about it," says the World Economic Forum. A shared economy is that you will not own anything, you will share it. The company BlackRock is buying up homes and then renting them out. Future generations will never own a home. Is this what we want for future generations? In smart cities, you will not own a vehicle. It will be a fifteen-minute walkable city to everything that you need. The World Economic Forum recognizes Utah for implementing their smart city agenda at the, at the point where the prison, Utah prison used to be. Representatives are passing bills to allow this unconstitutional city to be created. There are many evidence of the United Nations Agenda Twenty Thirty, Twenty Fifty being implemented in our communities such as stack and back housing located near shopping stores, e-bikes in Salt Lake City, bypassing communities, the UTA transit bus and track system, which has very low ridership. The citizens are forced to pay for this unsuccessful socialist boondoggle, employing bus drivers and fueling buses to drive around almost empty. Where is the accountability for this unsuccessful system? Is this liberty and justice for all? Planning and zoning are creating narrow roads and congestion, hoping to get each of us out of our vehicles to walk, ride a bike, or take the Utah Transit System. A good example is by the Temple in Ogden. Streets are very narrow with a bike path and landscape right in the middle of the street, which must be very expansive to water and to maintain. Parking in shopping complex. Parking in the shopping complex located in this area is very poor. Parking is another element to charge you to park your car even at your own residence and then pay for the parking with the app on your phone. The goal is to make everything expansive in owning a vehicle. The Box Elder Committee of Liberty recognizes that smart cities, the ending of property rights and vehicle ownership is a tyrant's dream come true. Creating a social credit score like they have in China to punish citizens who do not comply with the state or the Marxist tyranny that is being created here in America. Did each of you sign up for this tyranny? If not, each will need to become more knowledgeable about these issue, issues and help stop it for the sake of, sake of liberty for yourselves, all the citizens you represent and their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, next one that signed up is Janine Beer Bill.
I'm Janine Bill. I have observed the county commissioner meetings for several years now, and I must thank Deanna Hardy for her dedication and sincere steadfast endeavor to exercise her duty as a citizen of Box Elder County, for her persistence in petitioning redress of grievances, which is all citizens' constitutional right. She keeps fulfilling this duty even with the deafening silence of the county commissioners as they distractingly ignore her voice of constitutional redress by their brazen indifference as if she is an appointed enemy. The commissioners wrongly perceive they are to follow the orders of the governor, the lieutenant governor, and the state legislatures, and even our county citizens have accepted this also to rule over the manner of how our county is to vote. Constitutionally, it is our local representatives that are to ensure the integrity of the vote for their citizens and are to answer to the constitutional rights of their citizens only. I can only hope and pray that the uncovering and exposing of misuse of our taxation nationally, as is being revealed, will spill over into our state so unconstitutional use of our taxes will be discovered and eliminated, making all future activity of our county to be constitutionally guided and correctly implemented. Our present President of the United States, who signed the executive order for all federal elections to be voted on with, on with paper, requires citizen ID, which would provide secret ballots with the count completed the day of the election, so all votes will be tallied and accounted for. Voting this way, the cost will be at eight percent, will be eight percent of the cost of voting with machines. For Utah, there needs to be no more signatures used to run in the Republican primary. No more mail-in ballots, which does not ensure secret ballots. It stops possible ballots being lost or found, fixing the outcome of the election. It appears Deanna Hardy is vainly standing alone, but this is far from the truth. Or the unquestionable win of Trump could not have occurred. The day of reckoning is, has begun, and it's time for our county representatives to exercise their civic duty and preserve our God-inspired freedom.
Okay, thank you. All right, last person for public comment, Mark Murphy. Mark, if you'll come up and just take a seat right there and then introduce yourself and.
Good afternoon, I'm Mark Murphy from Willard, Utah. As we all know, the, before the settlers even came to our valley, uh, the local natives were using the Willard Canyon uh, for their purposes of irrigation and such. It became a, uh, when the, uh, local settlers did, uh, establish our city, the Willard Canyon was very important. In fact, uh, the reason the city of Willard is there is because of that canyon and its water. We have, uh, there was an established roadway that was established going up and down that canyon over properties and, and, uh, it created a prescriptive easement. However, in August of twenty twenty-three, as we know, a family decided to block that easement illegally, putting fences over the entrance to that easement and erecting signs which, uh, were no trespassing. Well, my wife and I started the Willard Canyon Access Coalition, and later on we established a LLC and incorporated it. We're working with Willard City, we've had in, uh, uh, because Willard City has had an interest in the gravel deal between the family and the gravel company. We have engaged with the IORAA, the International Outdoor Recreation Asset Alliance, as an, for an advisory role, and we've consulted with the Northern Utah Trails Association. We have a lead lawyer, a, a land lawyer, which is prepared to, uh, bring a lawsuit to open up that trail. We have, on the advice of the Willard City, forgotten that lawsuit up till now. We don't want to have to go to litigation. That's not our goal. And the, uh, the goal of our coalition is not to stop the mining. There are many people that would like to stop the mining, that's just not the goal of our coalition. Well, we just, uh, forgot the lawsuit when, uh, we got some indications that there was a deal. But we have seen, failed to see fruition of this deal yet. In fact, the barbed wire remains in place, the fence remains locked, and recently, additional no trespassing signs have appeared, and a trail camera has appeared at the entrance to the trail. Now, there's no safety risk to using the south side of the trail, which most people use anyhow. We can see, you know, blocking off the northern's trail, the, the trail that's just north of the creek. That would be a safety issue because that is near the mine. There's no safety issue on the south side. And besides, we've been advised by our lawyer and we found by, through the Utah ombudsman, that anybody that's on that trail is in, well, the, the owners are indemnified from anybody getting injured on that trail anyhow.
Okay, we've, we've reached our three minutes, I'm sorry, but we got to cut you off. It's part of the policy here, so.
Okay.
But we appreciate the information, we have your phone number, we can reach out to you, so, thank you.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure, and you can actually give a file to the clerk's office, it'll keep that on the record.
Okay, one thing, I'm sorry I took too much time. The one, the one thing we'd like to ask is that the sheriff open up that trail. It's his job to do it. And we would like a copy of the twenty-five best twenty-four for our lawyer.
Thanks for the comments. You can, because if you want to file your comments with the county clerk's office, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Do we have anything, closed session wise? Okay, we have a closed session here. All right, uh, we need to take care of the warrant register and our personnel actions here. So we'll take care of those real quick.
Uh, Commissioner Perry, I'm leaving, cutting out.
Okay, well, you go into your meeting and we'll deal with this other issue here in just a few minutes, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Keep the weeds under control for us.
Uh, we'll do our best. See you later.
All right, we got to get the warrant register real quick and then we can take a final motion here. Well, not a final motion. Just so, um, everybody's aware, what we're, we need, we have to go into a closed session to deal with some issues. So that, when we do that, we'll be asking people to leave, then we'll come back into open session before we close the meeting out. But we just need to be aware that there are issues we have to deal with in a closed session here. Is this a legal ma, is it personnel or?
There's, there's a personnel matter and there's also a litigation.
Litigation, okay. So let's take care of this warrant register real fast before we go into that, so we can take care of that in the. Twenty twenty. Is there just the two? Yep, looks like just two on that one. Okay. I'd be, entertain a motion, Commissioner Vincent.
I'd make a.
Closed session.
I'd make a motion that we move into a closed session.
For litigation and personnel matters, correct?
For litigation and personnel matters.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion passes. We're going to go into closed session, um, to discuss these matters here, so.